Don't be nervous.
My parents came out last night for dinner. Walked around the... Um, it was such nice night. Walked over the bridge and around the... It was so beautiful. I had no bugs yet.
Oh, yeah.
They come out for us tonight out last night for a stroll.
Did you see me?
No.
Also not totally gorgeous.
Will you laugh at me?
You want to what? Seriously? Sir, I saw.
You're smiling. Okay, they were so nervous about that one. One twenty-eight to five.
What?
Well, that's your stuff. Where did we play or who?
Why did you guys all put these online?
What? Sons of Pitches?
Hey? Why did you guys all put these online?
They're well for you. They're addressed to you, aren't they?
They are not.
Motion to adjourn after proceeding.
There's...
I just don't want them to blow up in me.
I can't find her here.
I'll just call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all. Another fun meeting. Let's, uh, could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make motion to approve the agenda.
Len and I in unison.
Excuse me, Mayor Council. Could we add, uh, nine point four Broadway City Hall project?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with, uh, an addition, nine point four City Hall project.
And I'll second that. All right, so there's a motion, including nine point four City Hall project and a second by Councilmember Henry. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Um, well, well, well. Who would like to introduce yourselves? Um, we have a group of middle school students, um, that are here to present their project that... Chaska Middle School East. Um, we actually, I was fortunate enough to be able to, uh, judge a few of the groups. There were thirty-five groups available and I think five or six went on to state?
Um, yeah. Seven or something like that.
I was really impressed and I think this is, um, one of the best. Um, Kaylee Pumper actually sent me an email yesterday, um, kinda outlining what they had, uh, suggested as a policy for teen drug abuse. And, um, we started talking about the process and she... I asked to meet with her and she said, "Well, they're pretty busy." And then when we started kinda going back and forth, I said, "Would you like to present to the city council?" So, if you guys wanna come on up and, uh, give your presentation, introduce yourselves and, uh, get on. You guys, why don't you go right over here to the microphone? Oh, yeah, go that way. That's perfect. Cause then you'll be on camera. Yes, perfect.
Yes.
Yeah, pull the microphone. They can stand up to the table with the microphone.
Oh, can you pull, can you set the microphone this way? Let's try that.
You could gather around the microphone.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Nice.
It's pretty sensitive. It'll hear even if you're a little farther away. Just speak a little louder.
Okay. Um, my name's Kaylee Pumper.
My name is Kylie Silas.
My name is Sienna White.
I'm Ella Thompson. Okay, well, imagine this. You walk up the stairs, knock on your child's door. You peek inside and see them taking heroin. You scream. They scream. They yell at you, "This is all your fault." You slam the door shocked, terrified, confused. You only wish to go back in time to stop this terrible tragedy. Many teens suffer from illegal drug abuse and we plan to decrease the amount of teens getting addicted with our policy. The problem I, my group and I chose for our project is teen drug abuse. We are trying to solve teen drug abuse because it is a large problem that has only become a greater issue throughout the years. Teen drug abuse is not only a problem in our community, as well, as well in our nation. In an effort to reduce the illegal drug trade, military intervention, a campaign of drug pro-prohibition and military aid was established and the government decided to call it the War on Drugs. This has not been working though because if the drug user has children or siblings, they could end up being a drug user as well and make it a never-ending cycle. This policy is also not preventing people from using drugs, but rather throwing them in jail and not giving them treatment.
In April, we had sent out a student survey to middle school and high school students in District 112. Eighty-one percent of one hundred and thirty-seven students said that they think teen drug abuse is a problem. Forty-eight point two percent know someone who has or is doing drugs. We had also sent out a teacher survey to middle school and high school teachers in our school District 112. Fifty percent of the teachers out of twenty-six said that they think teen drug abuse is a problem in their school. Sixty-five point four percent of the teachers had had experiences with students using. Sixty-five point four percent also wanted the government to be more involved with teen drug abuse. In two thousand fifteen, a senior from Chanhasen High School had overdosed on a synthetic drug, which unfortunately led to death. Only four years ago, that same student had gone to our school of Chaska Middle School East and walked along the same halls we do. In two thousand fifteen, seven hundred and seventy-two teens also had overdosed on drugs and seven million teens abused drugs. As you can see, teen drug abuse is not only a problem in our nation, but in our community as well.
Our chosen proposed policy is stricter laws and teaching requirements dealing with teen drug abuse. The first step of our policy is that teachers will be required to teach students the consequences of using drugs, starting in third grade and all throughout high school. Some of the required criteria will include teaching students how to say no when peer pressured or offered to drugs, how drugs affect the human body, and the strict laws that will be created from this policy. According to our policy, if a teenager is caught using or in possession of drugs, they will be fined seven hundred and fifty dollars and will be required to go to treatment classes three times a week for two hours each day. In the treatment classes, they will first have to undergo detox and participate in group therapy sessions to recognize the causes of their addiction while being educated on how drugs affect the body. To make sure these individuals are following this law, police will be assigned a person to what, to what treatment classes they will be attending. The treatment classes will take place in one high school for each district. If a teenager is caught or having possession of drugs twice, it will mean juvenile detention time based on the schedule of drug. After the individual has gone through these steps, they will be required to work with recovery experts to develop an appropriate aftercare plan. These laws apply to everyone, no matter the person's circumstances. All states will follow the same law and will allow a fair hearing for those who break the law. When a drug dealer is caught selling drugs, the fines, the fine consequences are doubled and the victim will go straight to jail based on the type of drug they are selling, which we have shown in our policy summary. Whenever a drug dealer is caught for a second time, they will be required to go to jail for life. The funding for this policy comes from the United States Medicare Fund and other drug laws that have failed in the past. The government will be in charge of the deposits from fines and keeping the jails open.
Uh, one of our advantages of having stricter laws and teaching requirements is that if teens know that the consequences are worse, it'll make them think twice about using drugs. Also, for kids, for kids learning, also learning about drugs at such a young age will influence kids not to take drugs when they are teens. Another advantage, advantage is that the deaths related to drugs will be lowered because people will start quitting. There'll be less crimes related to drugs because people won't be so addictive. High and break the law trying to get drugs. Additionally, drug business and drug dealers would lose customers because teens will have, will have, will have to quit. Lastly, parents in schools will feel relieved knowing that their teens have a likely chance of not getting into drugs. Some disadvantages with this policy are the police have to be more alert to execute the new laws, but there will be less problems to solve since the laws are being carried out. Also, parents and guardians might not agree that their children should be introduced to drugs at such a young age, but really, the sooner the better. Having teaching requirements for drugs will also be taking time out of class for students to learn. It would also cost more money for the treatment classes.
The government agencies that will be responsible for helping are Substance Abuse and Mental Health Service Administration, the National Institute on Drug Abuse, and the Department of Human Health and Services. Our policy is constitutional because it does not violate the laws that are being placed by the government. Since people have the power of freedom, stricter laws may limit the potential freedom that drug users have. Some people believe that drugs are beneficial for the human body, but studies show that only drug-related, that medical drugs are necessary, so there's no reason to defend it. If the government implies stricter laws, it would change the way people think about using drugs. The people that support our policy include Scott Knight, the Chief of Police for the City of Chaska, and Vanessa Kobinek from the Minnesota Adult and Teen Challenge. Sadness, depression, death. Drugs, our teens escape from it all, and they need a solution to end their addiction, an enforced solution. Stricter laws are the best way to solve this national problem. With the help of drug recovery organizations, schools, parents, and the federal government, we can decrease drug addiction. We just need your help to make this action plan a reality.
Um, we actually have made the plans in the first place.
Outstanding. Are you guys up for some questions?
Yeah.
Look at that.
Thank you.
Outstanding. Careful. Don't injure yourself here. We don't have insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for these kids?
I have a couple.
So do I.
Uh, first of all, what class did this come from?
The representative.
Yeah, what, what, uh, I mean, is this a project you're doing in school? So was it a social studies class, a...
Health class.
Health class?
Social studies.
Um, this is civics and language arts.
Civics and language arts. Social studies in my day. Social studies and English. Yeah. Okay, um, why did you choose this specific subject? I mean, did you have a choice of subjects you could?
Yeah. Um, so we like, we thought teen drug abuse because it's like been a problem that's only gotten like worse throughout the years. And it's like, the government is still focusing on teens more specifically prescription drugs, not legal substances that teens are specifically taking. Because teens are the ones who actually start, like, most of the stuff that starts in our teenage years. And if we're people from using in our teenage years, uh, and start solving drug abuse.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for coming and sharing your plan.
Yeah, it's awesome. I have two questions. First question is, are you guys looking for, uh, teen abuse of illicit drugs, illegal drugs, or prescription drugs, or both?
Mostly just illegal drugs.
Okay. And then the second question that I have is, um, I think it's a relatively great idea to get as much government as involved with this, but I, I also, have you thought about what it's gonna cost and who would pay for it? I know that you had mentioned a little bit about the, I think, Department of Health part of that, um, but that's a lot of money. No thoughts, no thoughts there yet? We're, we're moving on. I know, I know. I, I, maybe I'll talk to Chief Knight about that. Outstanding. So not quite to the point of total funding yet, just a great idea. Right on. I like it. You guys nervous still?
You did great.
Did really, really well, yeah.
We didn't get to meet you though.
Oh, I'm A.C.
A.C., it's nice to meet you.
What grade are you guys in?
Seven.
Seven. Really well done.
Yeah.
Good job.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you for finding the time, Kaylee Pumper. Parents should be proud. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. What a great way to start the meeting. Um, we don't have any reports, no public hearings. We're onto the consent agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Monroe. Second by Councilmember Hank. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No unfinished business. Um, Ms. Smith, City Hall site plan.
Mayor and Council, tonight we are reviewing the site plan for the new Broadway City Hall project. So this might feel like we are pretty far in the process to be reviewing the site plan at this point, and that's true, but it is a step that's required in our city code as part of the development process. So, a necessary step that we're taking as part of the project. A site plan generally depicts architectural rendering, site layout, site circulation, and project detail, which were included in your packet tonight. The information has been reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission on April tenth, and they voted on a five-zero vote.
Sorry.
That's okay. And it was underreviewed by the Planning Commission on April nineteenth and recommended on a four-to-zero vote. The Planning Commission had a pretty robust discussion about what solar might look like on this building, just related to some of the other solar ordinance work that we've been working on as a group. So, something to chew on a little bit. And as you know, council has approved this project, so again, just a procedural step at this time. The next slide is the layout of the first floor and second floor, which I suspect you're well-versed with at this point. And site renderings, so...
There, seriously, power. Sorry.
So as part of the site plan conditions, there are four included in the resolution. So one, final engineered plans will need to be approved by the city, so if you have any changes tonight, a final set of plans will need to be submitted and reviewed. A building permit is required, we'll review all signage and require a permit, and if there's any additional approval required from governing agencies, the applicant will be responsible. That is it on the City Hall site plan. I will open it up for questions, discussions, otherwise there is a proposed motion tonight that is on the screen.
Hold on. Any questions? This is just for the site plan, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one twelve dash eighteen, approving the City Hall site plan.
It's a motion by Councilmember Mock. I'll second that. Seconded by Councilmember Henry. Uh, any questions? There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, right back to you for, um, comprehensive plan extension.
Mayor and Council, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's the design Carver extension at this point, so changing the language a little bit.
Outstanding.
Based on the meeting that we had.
Nice.
So as required by the Metropolitan Council, we do have a timeline for our comprehensive plan. There have been some significant staff changes in who's working on that plan, so the city engineer and city planner. So we are requesting an extension from the Metropolitan Council to complete the plan. A draft timeline is on the screen. You'll see that there are a few community engagement events that I would like to hold, so two open houses and then a stakeholder meeting that will be included in the process. The timeline that is on the screen now puts us at about six months behind, so if we were tracking correctly, everything would be submitted to the Met Council December thirty-first of two thousand and eighteen, but there is a required six-month jurisdictional review. And at this time, that doesn't seem feasible to have a plan that works for us in that timeline. So there is a resolution that's required to be submitted to the Metropolitan Council requesting the extension. Are there timeline questions at this point?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one thirteen eighteen, approving the two thousand and forty comprehensive plan extension. I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Mock. Uh, any further discussion or comments, questions? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, apparently we can't have this, uh, meeting without Smidic. Uh, annexation Meridian Fields.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we also have the annexation for the project that we've been referring to as Meridian Fields. So tonight the review is nothing project-specific. It's bringing the land into the city of Carver, so we have land use control to start making some motions. So preliminary plat rezoning comes after the property is officially in the city. So a little bit of background, so you get your bearings. The concept for Meridian Fields was reviewed on February twentieth. It's eighty-three single-family homes developed by D.R. Horton, and preliminary plat is currently in first half review. Again, we're not discussing any of these details tonight, it's strictly the annexation. So, if you need your bearings, um, the school is southeast of the site. It's right along two twelve. The, uh, property is within the area defined by the orderly annexation agreement that we are in joint agreement with, with Dahlgren Township. The township has completed their review and the petitioner has provided all necessary application material for both the city and the township. So next steps after this, we forward information on to the state. There's a thirty-day review period until the annexation comes back as we have land use control over the land. At that point, we move forward with the preliminary plat and rezoning, so that will come, I think, early July is what we're tracking for, for those two motions at this point. And the comprehensive plan amendment can come before the annexation is complete since it's part of our two thousand and forty, our two thousand and thirty comp plan as an area where we anticipated development. So, we'll continue talking about this project throughout the next couple meetings, but first we need to get it in the city so we can start making some decisions.
So, sorry, any questions? This is a, this is annex, this is the annexation that brings this into the city and now we can move forward?
Correct.
Sum it up. Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution one fourteen dash eighteen, approving the annexation of the property in accordance with the orderly annexation agreement fourteen twenty-eight.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Henry, seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, City Council Communications.
No. Nine point four.
Oh, nine point four. I apologize greatly. I wrote it down too. It's right there. Nine point four City Hall. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
So just to bring, uh, up to speed residents, um, who might have missed the May third special meeting, City Council received a, uh, update on the bid process and the bid results, uh, for the City Hall project, and again, talked about that at work session. Um, looking to do a full or partial bid award at the May twenty-first. City Council meeting, just a brief history on the, the project as far as a financial perspective goes. Uh, just under four million dollars in April two thousand and seventeen, uh, after finishing the, the concept phase of the project that was facilitated by Leo A. Daly, excuse me, for around a eighty-five-hundred square foot, uh, building. Uh, in October of two thousand and seventeen, uh, Wold completed the design phase of the project that increased the scope of the building from eighty-five-hundred to just under ten thousand five hundred. Also included a commercial kitchen ad, and the City Council, uh, increased the project max to four point seven five million dollars. Uh, in January two thousand and eighteen, uh, Kraus Anderson and Wold approached the city, uh, to, to discuss a revised estimate, and the City Council agreed to make two hundred thousand dollars in project cuts. Uh, couple of examples of those included, uh, restructuring the bond issued in state to reduce capital interest costs. Uh, they also, the pitched roof over the council chambers section of the building was, uh, eliminated, and the council also, in conjunction with the two hundred thousand cuts, increased the project budget by two hundred thousand, uh, to make up a four hundred, estimated four hundred thousand dollar gap. Uh, and then that's what the council proceeded with, the four point nine five million, uh, for the cost of the project. And then recently, uh, the bid opening was April nineteenth, uh, the bids resulted in the project being over that four point nine five amount by, uh, two hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Uh, that figure doesn't include the fifty thousand dollar contribution that, uh, the city's making for the commercial kitchen upgrades, which brings the total cost of the project to five point two one seven, seven one one. Uh, kinda diving into some of the bid results, one of the pieces that became evident to the city, uh, after the, the bids were open was, uh, this purported need for a temporary retaining wall, and this would be in the section, uh, near the Fourth Street West Bridge. Uh, the retaining wall would be needed as a means and methods to hold the flood levee in place, uh, with the help of Brian Skolk and staff. Uh, we came up with a concept, and that's gonna be discussed at a, at a Wednesday meeting with K.A. and, uh, the low-bid contractor to look at the possibility of not putting that retaining wall in, um, removing a section of the levee and then constructing the building in place. I did have an opportunity to talk to, um, Dave Schultz with Kraus Anderson in between the work session and, and City Council, and so he, we've talked about this, and you'll see this in a further, or later slide about the unknown piece. Until we have that meeting and can get an idea of, of what those costs are, it's gonna be a little bit of an unknown until we can report back to you at your meeting on the twenty-first. But you can see, uh, the little bit for the project, or for this scope of the project, there was thirty-some-odd scopes, earthwork, electrical plumbing, and so on. The low bid was one forty-five, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Uh, they did not have this work, which is a kind of a needed safety piece at this point. The next low bid for site work was four hundred and seven thousand and some change. Uh, there is also a variety of, of, um, value engineering items or deletes as far as architectural features of the building go. Uh, this was reviewed with the City Council at the work session. I won't get into the specifics, but you can see a, a visual, uh, such as the removal of the, uh, concrete patio and, and decorative railing from the base bid. Again, that's, uh, number one. For example, that's a fifteen thousand dollar change. One of the pieces that we looked at, and this will be something that the council can, um, take action on at the, uh, meeting on the twenty-first, is picking those various items. One of the things that we moved on as far as, uh, trying to build a concept, this isn't a recommendation, it's just a way that you could get there, is deleting that rooftop unit. Um, one of the other pieces that we discussed was, um, changing the boiler system to a gas-fired forced air system and the, those related costs, and we had that, uh, estimate from K.A. and Wold earlier today. Um, the deletion of the temporary retaining wall, the replacement of the copper piping with PEX piping, uh, those are items that we'd be able to, to discuss or have more information on as the week proceeds. Um, and then as indicated in your last special meeting, the long-term plan, which was adopted by the council last summer, so the summer of two thousand and seventeen, had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from both the water and sanitary sewer funds, so a total of three hundred thousand dollars dedicated, uh, toward funding the project. It hasn't been something that's been discussed in earnest throughout the financial, uh, planning for this project, but it has been sitting there as kind of a stopgap should there be issues. Uh, so we, um, broached that topic again with the City Council at your May third meeting. Under this concept, um, you'd use a hundred and fifty thousand of that three hundred thousand, um, but could, to kinda circle back to what we wanted to address with the, the council tonight is, uh, having those bids open for sixty days or being able to approve those for up to sixty days. Um, you're in a position where you don't have to make really any immediate changes. You don't have to decide to use, uh, the enterprise fund donate, or enterprise fund contributions that are noted in the plan. But what we would suggest to the council, if you wanna, uh, proceed and keep timing in place, and there are a variety of ways to do that through some value engineering, so some of these scopes might not have to be rebid, we can do some value engineering on it, but we would like the council to consider a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the advertisement of bids for earthwork, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC as deemed necessary in cons, in consultation with Kraus Anderson for the Broadway City Hall project. I'll repeat that. A motion to authorize staff to proceed with the advertisement of bids for earthwork, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC as deemed necessary in cons, in consultation with Kraus Anderson for the Broadway City Hall project.
Do I hear us so moved?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and we'll open it up for discussion.
Um, I think to stay on track, this is a really good idea.
I agree, and I, you know what, I'd give credit to you, it was your idea, and I thank you for it. You're welcome.
You're welcome. No, I think, I mean, I think we're all thinking it, so, yeah, it's a good idea.
Anyone else?
I wanted to bring up, um, a possible option for some funding that may be available to us. Um, the Lions Club has a, a sizable, um, amount of funds that might, that are unallocated at this point, and being that we're a charitable organization, they do need to be allocated out within the next two months. Um, being that we are looking at some overages on the way the bids came in, um, I guess I am looking to see how the council feels about asking the Lions Club if they would be willing to donate some of that sizable, um, portion of, of proceeds that they have, we've raised over the last year, um, to possibly towards the commercial kitchen or the City Hall as a whole.
I'm in favor of it.
I thought we were gonna hold off on this. We talked about this in our work session, and said we'd hold off and talk about it at our next meeting.
At this meeting, tonight.
Oh, that's not how I saw it, otherwise I would've talked about it during the work session.
Well, um, I look at this way, the City Hall Community Building that we're building is gonna be a pretty big part of our community, and I think if the Lions have funds that they'd like to donate to help us with the building, especially since we are experiencing some overages here, um, that it's a, a good idea.
When we go back out for bids, we're not sure we're gonna have overages. Where I'm at with the Lions is, everybody in Carver is gonna be feeling this in their taxes. Every, I mean, and that being said, I know that the Lions, when they do all their projects, they do a great job, and they do a lot for the community, but they also brand everything that they do. Everybody in Carver should have their name on a block on this building also, if that's the case, because everybody else is getting hit with their taxes and paying for this also. So if they wanna donate more money, they can donate more money, but, um...
You know, Glenn, there's a plaque on the building that we're in right now that says Lions on it.
I understand.
So I think that, um, although I, I mean, I appreciate your point, I think that most organizations, when they give sizable amounts of money, um, often put up some type of recognition. Um, you see that from private and public entities that that happens. Um, I, I don't think that having a, a six-by-six Lions sign next to the serving window at the kitchen is somehow detrimental to the community. I think our community service organizations, who are willing to give money back to help possibly take some of the tax burden away, in this case, maybe not, because we're, you know, we're over and we're working out other means, but I think that looking the gift horse in the mouth of a, of a very important community organization here is an unfortunate viewpoint.
I don't disagree that they're very important.
And they have not, they have also not...
Can have the floor next.
They have also not committed to anything. This is really just to give them the ask, to see if they would be willing to put that funding towards this, since we do need to find a, a project to put it towards.
And, and, and can I just add one thing onto that? Even if we're, even if, let's say we get rebids and we get back to where we need to be, it's still a lot of money. I mean, we can, I mean, it's gonna cost a lot of money to build the building, so anything that will help defray that, will bring down people's taxes.
So I've just got two points to make. The first being is that this council voted five-nothing not to accept $75,000 from the football organization that wanted to help pay for lights, um, because we wanted to make sure that that was a city project. The second is, if, if whatever the Lions wanna make a donation, that's fine, but why not to the entire City Hall? Why to the kitchen, where they're gonna put a plaque? I don't agree with the plaque. Um, there isn't another organization, there's not another city in our, anywhere near us that has accepted money from any civic organization to have a naming right on a building. Um, I'm vehemently opposed to any, this isn't about the Lions, this is about, um...
Well, I don't know that that would be completely correct, I would be bemused to think that, like, the Victoria Lions and the new shelter they're building wouldn't have a plaque on it.
On their City Hall? This is a City Hall, this is a City Building.
This is not going on the front of the building, and we're actually, I think we're...
So you have the floor.
We're arguing a mute point about a plaque.
And I have the floor now, so this is where I'm at.
Then speak factually, please, and not innuendo.
There's no innuendo, there's, this is factually, and if you'd like to have the floor after me, you can do that. But the fact is, is that I'm asking any other City Hall in any area in the state of Minnesota, I'll throw it out there, that has taken a donation to have a plaque on board from a civic organization in a City Hall.
So if there was no plaque, would you be okay with it?
Um, sure. I, I mean, it's, it, why does it have to be towards a specific project? And why would we say no to a football organization that wanted to have $75,000 towards a $250,000 project? It was much size, more sizable.
And they would have more...
I, I, I still do have the floor.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
You have the floor, Doc.
Um, so, I, I don't think we're being consistent, and I don't think we're being fair by actually considering it when we've told other organizations that wanted to donate a more considerable portion of a project. Mr. Merrick.
Sorry to be a procedural nerd, council, but if...
Yeah, I know, we should probably get the...
There's a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second on the, on the, on the authorizing staff to proceed, and then we could maybe circle back to the Lions piece after that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the motion and second at hand? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Onto City Council Communications. Ms. Monroe.
No, I guess I don't have anything.
Ms. Johnson.
You know, I hate to bring it back up again, but may I weigh in on, please do.
Please do.
The Lions' argument. So my day job is in social responsibility and corporate philanthropy. It is quite common and a well-accepted practice where company A gives money to nonprofit B or however, and there's a physical sign of that donation or that investment in the community. So I have no issue with signs. Um, I have no issue with telling the Lions that there's a commercial kitchen going in, and it, I'm fine with the Lions making a donation. I don't think that we can tell a philanthro, a philanthropic organization in our community, no, you can't give money to help better this community.
We did. 75 grand.
I don't, was that before our time?
It was my understanding that they wanted to have pri, prime use of that, for that money. I may be wrong, but my memory serves me correct.
What was that?
They were a sports organization.
They're an athletic association.
Yeah, but not a philanthropic organization.
So anyways, I just wanted to weigh in with that. Um, I get it that you're up against a deadline with the meeting coming up, um, so I'm, if the Lions wanna donate money to help make Carver better or to invest in this community, I'm all for it.
Why don't they, could you ask them to donate to the HVC Plumbing? I mean, why does it have to be specific to the kitchen?
Why can't it just be to the project? How's that?
I'm cool with that.
I'm fine with that.
But why are we so against them doing the kitchen? They're...
Were they fundraised to give money back again to the community?
Yeah.
I think it has something to do with, uh, the thought that some people might think that an organization that donates to the city is looking for more ownership of something, but I don't think this is the case here. I think it was with the sports organization who wanted more access to a certain field, but...
I think, too, we can make this, I don't know how the Lions donates money, if there's just a check that appears, or if there's like a written agreement, but we can probably lawyer this up and make this very clear that there's not...
Yeah, and I'm not...
...ownership, that they're not buying for weeks, a year out of the, you know, kitchen use or whatever, you know? I think we can make that clear if that's what we as a council and a community decide. I don't see this as pay-for-play, you know? If this is purely a philanthropic donation, then I say, who are we to say, you can pay for our HVAC but not our kitchen or...
Well, how about a donation to the city and we use the money as we see fit towards City Hall?
That's kinda not how it works.
So no? Is that a no? Is that a no?
In my, in my experience, no, that's a no.
Okay, there you go. Done. All right, are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Mock?
I have no further comments.
Hank?
I'm good.
Mr. Merrick?
I'm good.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Arguer, you argue all the time, come tell us we can't argue.
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying, you got three, you make a motion.